Good evening, everyone. I'll call the city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Here.
Here.
Yeah.
Here. Is there anyone for the open forum? No. But would everybody please join us and stand and say the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd ask the approval of the minutes of the special city council work session of December 10th, 2013, and the regular city council meeting of December 10th, 2013.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Motion carries. Just a quick announcement as we go into council discussion. Tonight, we are moving ourselves off of paper agendas, we still have them, into electronic versions. And so you will see us looking at the screens back and forth, maybe flipping. This is a great transition, and it's really great to see the city do that. Bear with us if we get lost a little bit, and we're learning how to use the technology. I want to thank the staff for giving us some great training. It's hard to train politicians, so I hats off to you. And thank you, and we'll continue to go on with this. This is a great idea.
If I may, your honor, I'm going to apologize in advance for any untoward statements I may make when I get frustrated with computers, so...
Make them toward the computer, though. Councilmember Sandal, you had an item.
I did.
You gotta hit your button to see it.
Yep. You can see it.
There we go. Can we have it on the camera, the flyer? Am I putting it on the right spot?
There it goes. It's kind of up in the corner.
Okay, so there we go. All right. I just wanted to make an announcement. This is Sweet Streets, and you've seen this before, and you will probably see it coming up in the future as well. This is the fact that Richfield supports Better Roads to Make a Better Richfield. And we are having an open house, so the public can hear more about a couple of projects that are going forward. The first one is the Portland Avenue from Crostown all the way to 77th Street. And the second one is 66th Street from Xerxes to 16th. And this will be held on Wednesday, January 22nd, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. It will be at City Hall in the Municipal Center Building, our new building. You'll get a chance to see it if you haven't otherwise been here. And it will be in the large conference room in the back, behind the council chambers, called the Bartholomew Room. It's a pro- it's an open house that runs from 4:00 to 7:00. And there is no specific time for a presentation, so there'll be a setup so that you can walk around the room and find out what's going on, and have you share your input, and ask questions, and make comments. So I'd encourage anyone that has an interest in learning about what are going to be the new Sweet Streets in Richfield to come. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandal, is that all you had for your items? Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple items, I don't know if everybody saw in the news or whatever, the last Delta DC-9 flew out of Minneapolis, which we used to call the hush-kid aircraft. So that was the last of the old window rattlers that took off. So that's good news, now that we're transitioning to quieter craft. Also, I attended what they call a SMAC, meaning it's Airport Focus Group for Minneapolis. I went into the back to kind of see what was being said, and it seems like Minneapolis' focus is now to look at all the new people that have been elected, and to get them involved in airport noise. And I suggest we engage and do the same. Tomorrow morning, or tomorrow, we'll have our first knock meeting of the year. And we'll have some new members, well, a new member from Bloomington and that. So it'll be interesting to see what the mix is. I'll take good notes for that and show you what's going on and what the focus is. And basically, we're just going to go over and see what we're going to do for the year. There's nothing coming up that's real shining in it. Also, I wanted to comment, over the holidays, it was good to see people put up awesome Christmas lights. And I think we need to encourage that in Richfield. It was kind of interesting, was looking for something to do, and I looked at the list of Christmas lights that they had in one of the news things, and in the Star and Tribune. Apparently, it was a year old, because when I drove by, they weren't as awesome as some of the stuff we had in Richfield. And I would encourage our citizens next year, if we can mind ourselves, to, on the main thoroughfares at least, there's one in Portland that does it every year, about 73rd or something like that, to really showcase our city, because people go through, and then they see the lights, and they go, oh, that's cool. And I want to thank those people that did, because it really brought a little bit of different light, if you want to call it, to the city. So that's all I have.
Councilmember Garcia?
Well, let's see, I've got two things. I think there's a lot of folks that are very concerned about the coyotes and what's happening to, you know, to us, because we really have to be vigilant in terms of our pets. And Woodlake Nature Center put together a terrific video for the public and invited a number of people that have, you know, issues with this. And I saw that film, and it is on the website, the city's website. It is so interesting. You know, I would have thought, oh, this is just boring, but it isn't. You really learn a lot. But you also learn about how to haze, and that's just to scare a coyote. And I've gotten a couple of phone calls. The one thing that I would like to suggest for folks that are really concerned about the coyote population and their pets, and, you know, is don't leave anything out. You know, there's a lot of folks that want to feed their squirrels, or they have wood piles where you get mice. Or, you know, there's a number of ways that you can, you know, make sure that they don't come into your yard. And the other thing, too, is to talk to your neighbors and see if you can, if you can follow a plan so that if they are invading your neighborhood, that you're all in the same program in terms of knowing how to haze these coyotes. And it'll be to a big benefit for all of us that have little dogs. The other thing is, we had an energy audit done, and you can also find out about that at the city's website. And that was just so well done. It was just impressive, the way they go through your house, and they give you pointers, and they check your insulation, change your light bulbs, do weather stripping, put a blanket on your water heater if you need it, change your shower heads, whatever you need. But this was a program that's $50, and the city, you know, the city pays the other part of the fee, and it is really worthwhile. So I would encourage everyone to do that, and to do it now in the wintertime. I think it's a big value in terms of your savings. And so I really appreciate the work that they did, and the city for getting this done.
If I can comment, Edwina, I had that done, I don't know, last spring or whenever it was. And I think you make it up in just light bulbs, frankly, the replacement with the cost of savings from the light bulbs. And you don't have to change them so often. I had some canister ones in my ceiling in my kitchen, which are just a pain to do, and I haven't changed one since. So that's good news.
Absolutely.
They're giving fluorescent ones or LEDs?
Yeah, fluorescent was what I think we got, yeah.
And the thing is, too, if they see that, you know, like, they suggested that, you know, I think you have a refrigerator, and they said, you know, this refrigerator's old, you should consider getting another one. And so, you know, tips like that are helpful. Then you can save up to purchase an appliance or a dishwasher, whatever, so that they're energy-saving and energy-efficient.
Councilmember Elliott?
I was just thinking about the new light bulbs. And I think from an energy-saving standpoint, they're wonderful. From an ophthalmologist's standpoint, it's a goldmine for them, because you can't read by them, so... Two things. In lines with Sweet Streets, we received a mailing, and I know that a lot of Richfield residents did, talking about being open for business that came from the city. And I received three calls already from local businesspeople that are interested in contacting the city and following through on that. And it was, much like we saw here, it was well-produced, it was well-put-out. It made suggestions and welcomed inquiries without promising anything. And I think the people I talked to wanted to know more about it, and I said, you know, take a look at it, talk to the city. There's no guarantees. They can get you one, but we've got business consultants, we've got access to information. And if you're expanding, building on a business, wanting to start a business, it's a great start. And I think, I think the open for business is a good indication to the local businesspeople to come and work with us in a partnership, and we're going to do everything we can to help you expand and stay in Richfield and turn it into an even more growing community. Second thing is, I know on the agenda tonight, there's an item involving Richfield Fire Station Number Two. And, you know, it's been renovated and brought into Title IX compliance and all that. And I think it's a benefit for all our firefighters that spend 24 hours there in terms of having some ambiance and some comfort levels between the adrenaline rushes they get on a call. More importantly, to some of the people that have been sponsoring and behind Penn Central for the last five or six years, prominently displayed on the front of it is Penn Central. So we didn't get a monument signed, but it's certainly there, and it's certainly recognizable to the people. And I think it's a kudos to the people that pushed for it, and also to the city and the fire chief for getting it on the front of that fire station. It looks really nice.
It's beautiful, too. It's very pretty.
Yeah, it is. It's a very impressive building, so...
Very, very nice. And I know we had to struggle to get that through. Thank you. The other thing is, is, of course, we know it's winter upon us, and I want to thank those people who are already going out, and I'm seeing some of them around, who are digging out the fire hydrants. I know we go out and do it, too, but, boy, we could use a hand. It's a lot of work, and we're trying to clean up the streets, and we're probably going back through, and it sounds like more snow's on the way. So whatever you can do to help the city, we really do appreciate, to open up the drains and open up the fire plugs. So thank you for doing that. Any other council discussion?
I would like to apologize to the entire city, because I went out and scraped my sidewalks yesterday so that I would have clean sidewalks, and it's my fault that it snowed. I'm sorry.
The consent calendar, city manager.
Madam Mayor, you know, I wanted to pull out item G.
Oh.
Because that's the item that Councilmember Elliott was talking about. But it's such an important item, I think that we want to highlight it. It's one of the better things that the city staff has done, and, I mean, they do great, great work. But it's one of my favorites, and I think it's an important item.
Okay, I'll give it to you, too, then. Council agenda, I'll ask for approval with item 3G pulled out.
And I also...
For Edwina Garcia, and you?
I also requested E be pulled.
And E for Sue Sandal. Okay, Sue, you can have that one. Is that approved? Agenda approved with those corrections?
I'll move that.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The consent calendar for those in the audience contains several separate items, which are acted upon by the city council in one motion. Once the consent calendar has been approved, all the individual items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further council action on those items will be necessary. Tonight, we have a very long consent calendar shortened by two items that have been taken off, but I'll read what's left on the consent calendar. Item A is consideration of the approval of canceling the public hearing regarding establishment of a proposed property tax abatement for the City of Richfield Ice Arena Bonding Refunding and Expansion Project. Item B is consideration of the approval of the resolutions designating the official depositories of the City of Richfield for 2014, including the approval of collateral. Item C, consideration of the approval of a resolution designating the Richfield Sun Current as the official newspaper for the City of Richfield for 2014. Item D is consideration of the approval of designating the Assistant City Manager or an available department director as the Acting City Manager for 2014 in the event the City Manager is absent from the city. Item E has been pulled. Item F is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the use of city credit cards by city employees otherwise authorized to make purchases on behalf of the city. And now I'm going to try to page down, and there it is. Our item G has been...
Item G is pulled.
Item G has been pulled off. Item H is consideration of the approval of the first reading of an ordinance amendment to the Richfield City Code Appendix D, which is a fee schedule, and scheduling a public hearing and second reading for January 28th, 2014. Item I is consideration of the approval of a resolution denying a subdivision waiver for 7215 Logan Avenue, which is three lots. Item J is consideration of the approval of a resolution granting a six-month extension of an approved variance allowing the construction of an addition to the home at 6800 Upton Avenue. Item K is consideration of the approval of a resolution authorizing the Source Water Protection Grant Agreement between the City of Richfield and the Minnesota Department of Health. Item L is consideration of the approval of a one-year amendment to the 2009-2013 Master Grant Contract from the State of Minnesota Department of Health for the calendar year 2014 designated to administratively simplify the review of grant agreements of the local public health agencies. Item M is consideration of the approval of a resolution appointing Health Administrator Osborne as the Board of Health Agent on matters related to the Minnesota Department of Health as it relates to the Richfields Local Public Health Grant. And that concludes tonight's consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have item first, 3E, that was pulled. Councilmember Sandal?
And I'm going to resort to paper, because I don't scroll very fast. Thank you, your honor. This is one I just wanted to bring up. We don't have to necessarily make a change today, but I think it's something that, as a council, I'd like to discuss, unless the council wants to make a decision. This resolution requires... What was it? It's dealing with attendance by city council members at meetings, and...
What part of it are going, pager?
And it's the, it sets a fine for council members who don't show up and don't call in and explain why they're not here. I've been on the council for 15 years, and in 15 years, we have never, ever fined anyone. Council members, as a rule, have reported their absences or vacations, or out of town for work, or whatever. It has not been a problem. I checked with my husband, who was on for the 14 years before me, and he said they had never fined anyone either. And I don't know if it's part of the city charter. I think it's just a statute that we have based on ordinance.
Do we have history on this?
I can, I can give you some history. I've been here for longer than 15 years. This, this just came to pass at a time when there were just some discussion about how many council meetings a council member or council members may have missed. And there then became a discussion on the city council as to whether these things are, would be excused or not. And council members would then have the authority to excuse another member based on the reason that they were gone. And so this got put into place. And it was roughly sometime in the 90s, mid 90s, early 90s, somewhere in that timeframe, that it got put into place. In the years prior to that, of course, we never had anything, any resolution like that. It's true, and I've been here for, going on 34 years, I've never seen any council member be fined for missing a council meeting. And, you know, actually, you have to go through the process of excusing someone, or else, I suppose, technically, you haven't met the spirit of the resolution. And there probably has been times where they may have forgotten to be, to be done. And really, nothing becomes of that, just a simple administrative error. So, you know, in fact, there's really no, there's nothing, there's nothing behind this resolution that I see that really makes it imperative, since we've never had a problem with a council member not telling us that they're going to be gone. And people do have to be gone. I mean, council is a part-time job. It's not a full-time job. People have their own jobs and their own responsibilities, and everyone's very good about notifying us when they're going to be gone. So it's entirely up to the city council as to whether or not you want to have a resolution like this on the book.
So I guess I would ask the council, I suppose we could not approve it and continue it, or change the number to zero, or just discuss it if we wish to at a future meeting.
I think that the only thing that we really should be, and it's a common professional courtesy, is just let some, you know, most of you are pretty good to let me know when you're not going to be around, and so that I can announce it and do that. And maybe that's what we want to change it to, is just that we extend professional courtesy.
Well, I always call, let the mayor know and the city manager.
Yeah.
And I don't know, I don't think we really need that, so I would move to just remove it from consideration.
I'll second that.
I would just suggest that if, in fact, I think we've heard commentary here for the past 34 years, it hasn't been a problem. If it's a problem for a city council in the future, they can deal with it. But to me, I'm not going to say it's offensive, but it kind of impugns our integrity and the reason we ran for office and the reason we're up here in the first place.
I still think it's a common courtesy, though, just to say something.
Oh, yeah, I think...
And I think it's announced it here that, you know, they're excused.
I think there's any doubt that all of us make sure that there's something...
Yeah, we've all done, you have always done that, okay. I don't have anything against that either. So the motion is before us to remove this.
I'll second.
All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So done. Councilmember Garcia, you have item G, 3G.
Okay, this is, this is the item that Councilmember Elliott was talking about. And what the resolution, resolu... Okay, give me, give me a little time. I can't even do it on the computer, and I'm trying to do it on paper, and I can't do that either.
You've got too many things to look at right now, don't you?
Edwina, this is what I apologize in advance for, if I happen to say something that wasn't appropriate, so...
Okay, anyway, we want to adopt a resolution approving the City of Richfield's participation in Hennepin County's 2014 Economic Development Initiative, Open to Business, and approving a contract with the Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers. And this is, this is a program that I think has really done well. And what, the purpose of it is to promote economic development, create and retain jobs, and cultivate entrepreneurs. Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority launched a Small Business and Entrepreneur Technical Assistance Initiative, and it's called Open to Business. To further this initiative, HCHRA has fostered a partnership with the Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers, MCCD, to provide benefits of the original program to suburban Hennepin communities. The City of Richfield began participating in this program in the year 2013 for the Open to Business. Throughout 2013, Richfield's Open to Business program achieved the following outcomes. 27 businesses entrepreneurs served. 196,204 interacted and facilitated financing. 296,000 leveraged capital. And 160 hours of technical assistance provided. Continued participation in the Open to Business program in Richfield will allow Richfield businesses, entrepreneurs, the opportunity to receive free, one-on-one confidential technical assistance. Additional services provided through the program include business plan development, feasibility studies, cash flow, and financing projections. Marketing prepared loan requests and advocacy with lending institution. And Mr. Stark, maybe you can, you know, tell us a little bit more.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilmember Garcia. I think you said it very well. Maybe just a couple of things I would add. One is that, if the camera can show this, a postcard was sent out, I believe, last week to all Richfield households. So everybody in Richfield should have received this. What you need to know at home is that this is a service that's available to anybody, any resident in Richfield who's thinking about starting a business or has a business and looking for ways to grow it, regardless of whether that business is in Richfield or elsewhere. It's also available to non-Richfield residents if they are looking to build or grow a business here in Richfield. The business advisor helps with all the things you just talked about. Helps people set up their, their business plan, helps them obtain financing. Just helps, you know, get them on their feet and point them in the right direction with resources. The business advisor is available anytime by making an appointment. Or if people just wanted to drop by, he is here on the last Wednesday of every month, roughly from 8:30 in the morning until lunchtime. So, you know, if that's something anybody's interested in, call City Hall. There's absolutely no cost to participate. There's no reason not to do it, so we are glad to see so many Richfield businesses being helped by this.
Thank you very much. So I will, I will, I will go ahead and move that we adopt the resolution providing the City of Richfield's participation in Hennepins County 2014 Economic Development Initiative, Open to Business, and approving a contract with Metropolitan Consortium of Community Developers.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, council member. You actually have the next item, item number five.
Okay. And I have to read it, too, because...
That's okay.
I'm not...
We're all getting used to this. It's all going to happen.
Madam Mayor, can I just interject one quick thing?
Please.
You know, as we, as we switch, and it's a little different, you know, working off these screens. But I think one thing to keep in mind, and I was remiss, I was going to remind this in the training that we did. One of the things that we did in preparation for going to this electronic agenda is we tried to put every salient point of every item in the executive summary of every staff report. And to that end, I know that, you know, when you're looking at scrolling down through the staff reports, I think what's important is that, from my review of the staff reports, I believe that all of the essential facts that you have to present are covered in the executive summary. And if you want to go on with some of the other, other facts that are set forth in the staff report, you can do that, or you can ask staff to comment on those if you want to. But I think that, you know, the executive summary alone would, would take care of it, and that might make it easier, especially just scrolling through to find the whole piece of the staff report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Good. It's kind of bulky.
Lot to this.
Okay, this is, we're gonna, this is a public hearing. So what we want to do is consider approval of a site plan to allow a daycare and preschool facility serving up to 38 children at 6949 Niclet Avenue. Reito de Sol Daycare and Preschool is currently operating out of a space in Richfield High School, serving 38 kids. The space they're currently leasing will no longer be available, and they are seeking a more visible and convenient location. They have applied for a permit from the state to operate a daycare and preschool facility serving up to 38 children at 6949 Niclet Avenue. A change in the use of building, of the building requires site approval. This business was previously used as a bakery outlet. Those of us in the neighborhood call it the bread store. The property management company is aware of the significant site improvements that must be made to bring the property into compliance with city requirements. Plans to reduce existing impervious surface coverage in order to meet or approach current standards must be in place within one year of the date of this approval. All site improvements must be complete within 18 months. And this went before the Planning Commission, and they unanimously voted approval. And we did, and apparently, there was someone that had some concerns. And maybe that individual is here tonight, so it is a public hearing.
We'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to comment, please come up to the mic. You have approximately three minutes to speak. If the owners are here, it'd be really nice if you came up and said hello and introduced... If the owners are here, it'd be really nice if you came up and said hello and introduced yourself. Please introduce yourself and give us your address.
Good afternoon. My name is Luisa Fuentes. I'm the director for Regito de Sol, the Spanish immersion preschool. We were here in Richfield for the last five years. We start in the dual immersion. We moved to, um, Richfield High School. And now, we are going to have our own location. We are very excited about it, and to continue in the city of Richfield. This is our second location. Our main location is in Minneapolis downtown.
Oh, okay.
And tell us about, um, what age the, the children are.
In this site, we're going to have only toddlers and preschool age, which is, eh, children from sixteen months, eh, through kindergarten. Eh, we're going to have only thirty-eight children. Eh, number one, because as, teaching as a second language is, um, is not like teaching basketball. We have to focus a lot of one-to-one. But eh, the main focus of the school is, um, to, to serve the community and, and teach American childrens about our Latino values. Eh, and everything is under, um, an intense curriculum. We are a charter who is an ACAC accredited. Only seven percent of the chikers in the whole United States have disaccreditations, and we are one of those. And we are very happy to bring that eh, kind of quality to our city.
Wonderful.
Can, how many employees will you have?
Eh, in that location, we're going to have eh, five full times and eh, two part times.
Okay, so you have nine parking spaces, so five, six, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then, eh, you have like, eh, one bicycle parking space.
Yes.
Well, I'm, I'm getting converted by Councilmember Sandal. Because, you know, it's, it's just, we're, we're having too many parking problems in our city. And, um, anything that you can do to, to, you know, to, to make it... Because the other thing is, if you wind up having too many people parking on the streets, it's, eh, you know, the residents will, will, you know, not, not be very happy with it.
Yeah, eh, we have eh, actually, our eh, director for that location, she lives like, two blocks away, so she's not going to use a car. And eh, I'll say three or four of our staff members take the bus. So, we're going to have plenty eh, parking space for the location.
And where will the children play?
Eh, well, eh, for now, eh, we're going to ask for a variance to the DHS. Eh, we can use the park, eh, just across the street, eh, and eh, we can do that. However, we are going to have our playground eh, in the side of the building. Eh, we are going to have, eh, I believe, like fifteen hundred square feet eh, of play area outside, connecting with the building.
Wonderful. Okay.
And do you have like, kitchen facilities, or?
No, eh, we, eh, parents are going to eh, pack their eh, children's lunch, just because it's eh, such a small location. Eh, we are not going to have eh, kitchen on site. And eh, we are going to provide snacks and milk, and everything complying with the health department.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Thank you very much. Any other questions? Eh, this is a public hearing. Please step forward and state your name.
My name is Tim McLaughlin. I live at nine-nine-nine-nine Dell Road in Eden Prairie. I represent the property owners, and we're very excited to have eh, preschool and something that services the community eh, in that area, I think, very well. And we're also looking forward to making the improvements to the property and, and just making it eh, win-win for everybody.
Yeah, we, we like the improvements as well. Thank you. Thank you for doing this, property owner. This is a public hearing. Would anyone else like to come forward? I'll move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Any other conversation? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is closed. Councilmember?
So, Madam Mayor, I will move that, um, we approve the attached resolution granting approval of a site plan for a daycare serving up to thirty-eight children at sixty-nine forty-nine Niclet Avenue.
I'll second that. Other comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. And the next item, Councilmember Elliott.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this item involves a public hearing to consider the preliminary and final plats of sixty-four oh-one Penn Avenue. That's fire station number two. As part of the fire station renovation project, the city undertook the plating of the property. The plating process offers the opportunity to review the property's title, review existing easements and other property encumbrances, and in this case, to simplify, or to simple, to simplify the property's legal description. Um, all plats of land must be approved by the city council. Preliminary and final plats are typically processed and acted upon by the council simultaneously. The plat will be recorded within thirty days of the, of the council approval. This is a public hearing, so I would open it for inquiry or comment.
This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to step forward and make comments at the mic? Anyone come to the public hearing? I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. Councilmember?
Um, I would just suggest, I think, that it was comments were made about how, how wonderful the renovation was and what it looks, at least from the exterior. I'm not sure, City Manager, I mean, in, in terms of what we did in there, the renovations on the inside, is there an opportunity, if citizens want to get a look at what we did and what their money paid for, to, to contact the chief or somehow have an opportunity to, to maybe take a look at, at what their, their money paid for?
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Okay.
You know, we've had an open house, but, um, and we did have a number of people take a look at it. But yeah, you, you know, certainly get ahold of somebody over there, and, um, they're very friendly over there. They...
Okay.
Give people a tour.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure they knew they had the opportunity if they chose to go over and take a look. Thank you. Um, with that being said, at this time, I would, uh, move to approve a resolution granting the final approval of a preliminary and final plat for sixty-four oh-one Penn Avenue, Fire Station number two.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carries. Councilmember Gar- oh, uh, Elliott.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm trying to figure out where all my notes are, too. Where's in there?
Even you're confused.
A little bit, a little bit.
This item for consideration is a resolution approving a subdivision waiver, which will allow the division of seventy-two fifteen Logan Avenue, a hundred and fifty-foot wide lot into two seventy-five-foot wide lots for the construction of new single-family homes. Mr. Enders, is it Enders? Am I pronouncing that correctly? Okay, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to get in a fight with you again, so. Um, Enders Custom Homes has entered into a purchase agreement with the owner of seventy-two fifteen Logan Avenue. Enders Custom Homes seeks to divide the existing hundred and fifty-foot wide lot into two seventy-five-foot wide lots and construct two new single-family homes. The existing house, garage, and driveway would, would need to be removed. The proposed lots meet all the minimum width, depth, and area requirements of the city zoning code. City staff has reviewed the proposal and has found no rationale for denial. On November twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen, the city council denied a subdivision waiver for the three fifty-foot lots in this property, with a finding that the, that the proposed lots did not meet city requirements. With that being said, I, Mr. Enders, I, I want to, I, I know that the HRA said the same thing. I want to thank you for coming back in and, and listening to, to some of the comments that were made. And I, I have no doubt, and I mentioned this before, that you built a wonderful home. And I think that, that, you know, keeping it at seventy-five-foot lots hopefully is, is going to be beneficial for you. I know the neighbors are going to love it, and it's going to add to the neighborhood. And I think, once again, uh, you're sticking with it and coming back in here and, and doing what we suggested is a testament to you. And, and also, I, I hope to see you bid and buy many more lots and build more houses in Richfield. With that being said, Your Honor, at this time, I would move to approve the attached resolution granting a subdivision waiver for seventy-two fifteen Logan Avenue.
I will second. I too want to thank you for coming back, um, and coming in and doing this. We're real excited to see new homes in Richfield, and especially, we need some move-up housing. So, we appreciate that, eh, you come to do that here. So, Councilmember?
And I'd just like to thank the residents, too, that made it well-known. I had to the council, and they came into the meeting and got part of the process. And, uh, we do listen to residents, and we also, I, I do appreciate what you've done, uh, coming back. And I know it probably was financially different for you, but, uh, in our eyes, you've done the right thing, and we hope to see you again.
Yeah. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor?
Please, we have a portion. Did you, it's up to the council if we want him to speak? Do you want to speak? Oh, this isn't a public hearing at this point. No, it was closed. Did, did you want to allow him? It's up to council? This is your item?
Um, if, subject to everybody else's approval, I'm, you came, I think, I'd welcome.
You want to speak, sir?
You came here? Speak. Please state your name and your address.
Yes, my name is Wallace T. Johnson, Jr. I'm the homeowner at seventy-two fourteen Knock. We've lived there since nineteen eighty-eight. I only met the owner of the property, seventy-two fifteen, uh, once. And it was when I was repairing, uh, the fence, uh, in our backyard that fell down. And I, I dug, uh, uh, new holes for four-by-fours and all this. And he said, eh, "You can have this fence." I'm just curious as to, I don't know where the lot line is. And, eh, I would like to have a fenced yard. Eh, I, I would, the only question I have is, eh, eh, what's going to happen to the fencing eh, on the back of the lot?
Why don't you come on up? That's a good question. Thank you. That's a good question. Please state your name.
Dustin Enders, seventy-two fifteen Logan Avenue South. Well, when we had proposed to split this into three lots, we had, we were planning on replacing that fence and doing a, a new privacy fence around there. But now that we can only split into two, unfortunately, we can't fit into the budget to still build a house that someone's going to buy. So, if we get a homeowner that wants to replace the fence, then we'll replace the fence. But right now, it's not in our budget.
But he has a right to find his plot line, and would you assist him so that if he wanted to put a fence up on his?
Correct, yeah. If you want to repair that fence or do whatever you need, because it, it does look like it's fallen over. But right now, it's not in our cards to fix it. Okay. Okay.
And you probably have the lot lines, don't you?
Yeah, we have, we have a survey, and I, I don't know where that is on, I'd have to look. I don't remember, but I'd have to look and see where that fence is. Fence doesn't really matter to me, what happens with it. If you want, take it out, put your own fence in, that's you. Just let them help, whatever we could help. But right now, we don't have the budget to put it.
Yeah, well, I'm not asking for a new fence. I was just wondering what the plan is.
Okay.
I don't know if it's on my property, or it's on...
Right. Did they say who built it? The homeowner? Previous buyer?
Nope. I only met that person once.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sure city staff and Mr. Enders will help you figure that out. So, yeah, no, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. Any other discussion? We've already proved it? We'll move on? Councilmember, Edwina Garcia, I believe you have the next item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, I didn't, I scrolled and found it, and then I lost it again.
It's okay.
So, here we go. Okay. Take off my glasses so I can read. Okay, this is, um, um, this item, you know, we, we will call for a public hearing on February the twenty-fifth, twenty-fourteen. And the reason for that would be the modification to the redevelopment plan for the Richfield Redevelopment Project area and proposed establishment of the twenty-fourteen-dash-one City Garage Site Redevelopment Tax Increment Financing District and adoption of the Associated Tax Increment Financing Plan. On November the seventh, twenty-thirteen, staff provided the council with, with a memorandum from the city manager, which discussed establishing a tax increment financing district for the former City Garage and Gleason's Mortuary Site. Sites, that memo explained that the building on the sites are hazardous and should be demolished in the interest of public safety. The cost for demolishing the buildings, as well as any necessary environmental remediation, would be eligible for reimbursement by tax increment financing proceeds in the event that the site were established as a TIF district. Since that memorandum was provided to policymakers, the architectural firm of LHB Inc. has conducted an evaluation of the site and determined that the site and the building it contains would meet the requirements necessary to qualify as a redevelopment TIF district under Minnesota state statutes. If the city council and the Richfield Housing and Redevelopment Authority were to take the necessary steps to establish this TIF district, then the HRA and city council could use TIF funds to reimburse them for the money expended on demolition and environmental cleanup. These funds would be contingent upon an adequate development occurring on this site within five years of establishing such a TIF district. Policymakers would also have the ability to make a future decision about the allocation of any additional tax increment funds that were generated by such, such a development. And I don't know if the, if staff has any, anything to add?
Um, no. Madam Mayor and Councilmember Garcia, I think you, again, stated it, uh, very well. Uh, and, you know, the, the buildings are really in bad shape. Uh, we're afraid somebody's going to get hurt in the buildings. Uh, there are, there have been evidence of, of people getting into the buildings in the past. Uh, we've really been holding off on demolishing these for years and years because the, the, the discussion always comes back to, well, gosh, how are we going to pay for this? Uh, we can pay for this out of city funds, but then, uh, you know, those funds are gone forever. Uh, and we knew that ultimately, if, if this were to get redeveloped, these would be TIF eligible costs. And it just made so much sense to wait until developer came along, uh, to demolish them. We, we don't feel like we can wait anymore. Uh, we think the time is to go ahead and get them demolished and worry about development later.
Comment?
I, I think there's also, for a while, been some suggestions that having some green space are looking at that. So, I mean, there's a cost, but if we can do it this way and open the space, I think just visualizing what can go there is a lot easier than when you're not looking through a bunch of old, falling-down buildings.
Yeah, I would say, though, um, we haven't, you know, vetted every idea on the site. The thinking is it would, the, uh, would probably have the site fenced off. Uh, we talked about environmental remediation. That's environmental remediation to the buildings themselves. Um, there's, you know, some concerns or questions about the asphalt and soils and things of, you know, whether there are any contaminants there. Um, and so we'll have to look into whether leaving that as an open space would, would pose a liability to the city or not. And if it did, um, you know, we'd, uh, we'd probably fence it off. We'd fence it off as, you know, attractively as we could, if that were the case.
Yeah, I, I guess that, that a fence, I mean, just visually having the buildings down, even if it is fenced, gives you a better idea of how much space there is and what can be done and what can't be done. So, I, I understand needing to protect the city against the liability. I just think having them down is going to be a benefit in, in marketing the property.
Well, and the safety issues, too, with having those buildings up, with people getting into them. And there's contamination and stuff on that site. That's terrible.
Yeah, you know, and a, and a key word in the community development world is shovel-ready. And this, this would really help make these sites shovel-ready.
Okay. That's a great idea.
Good job, uh, staff, because I, the saga continues in the next two agenda items. Anyway, uh, so, we want to adopt a resolution, uh, which is attached, calling for a public hearing on February the twenty-fifth, twenty-fourteen, to consider modification to the redevelopment plan for the Richfield Redevelopment Project area and proposed establishment of the twenty-fourteen-dash-one City Garage Site Redevelopment Tax Increment Financing District and adoption of the Associated Tax Increment Financing Plan. So, I will move that.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Sandal, you have the next two items.
Councilmember Garcia is correct. The saga does continue. So, this is...
So, this is a consideration of a resolution to actually designate the buildings associated with the former City Garage Site, part of which is formerly known as Gleason's Mortuary, as structurally substandard within the Richfield Redevelopment Project area and authorizing their demolition. And back in November of twenty-thirteen, staff provided the city council with a memorandum which is attached to this our council packet which discusses the establishment of a TIF district for the former City Garage in Gleason's Mortuary Site, and the memo explained the hazardous of the, hazardousness of the buildings and that the site probably requires that they be demolished for the public safety. And in order to identify sources for the costs associated with the demolition, staff is proposing that we establish this as a redevelopment TIF district. And if it's established, as staff just indicated, future tax increment generated by any development within five years could be used to reimburse the city and the HRA for funds expended for the demolition. And in order to qualify for the redevelopment TIF district, the property within the district boundaries must be found to be blighted and structurally substandard under requirements established by Minnesota State statutes. And the staff has hired the architectural firm LHB Inc., which has conducted an extensive evaluation of the site and issued a very extensive report, including photographs, which shows that in fact, this particular site does in fact meet the needs to qualify as a redevelopment TIF district. And what we are being asked to do is to make a finding that accepts the resort, the results of the report, designates the buildings as substandard as defined by Minnesota statutes, and also approves the demolition of the structures, specifically the former City Garage Buildings and the former Gleason's Mortuary Building, within the proposed TIF district boundaries in advance of creation of the TIF district. And I think we've all had a chance to look at the photographs showing the leaking roofs, holes in the walls, numerous, numerous things that needed, that would need to be corrected. It also shows, the report indicates that the costs of repairing would, don't justify keeping the properties. That's pretty clear. And certainly, all of the buildings have passed their life expectancy. So, with that, I will move that we adopt the resolution that designates the buildings associated with the former City Garage Facilities and the former Gleason's Mortuary as structurally substandard within the Richfield Redevelopment Project area and authorizing their demolition.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have the next item as well.
And this is the third in our triumbret here, having to do with this. Now that we've said, yes, we're going to have a TIF district, and yes, we're going to take the buildings down, now we have to figure out how we're going to pay for it. So, this one is to consider a resolution to authorize an interfund loan for advancing the costs in connection with the proposed Tax Increment Financing District twenty-fourteen dash one. And in the event the TIF district is established, it's recommended by staff that the city establish an interfund loan for an amount not to exceed three hundred thousand dollars to authorize payment for the demolition and other qualified costs. And the recommendation is that the funds would be transferred from the city's Capital Improvement Reserve Fund. And we've already talked about the reason for doing it, because the buildings are hazardous, we need to take them down before someone is injured. And I'm assuming we have at least three hundred thousand dollars in that fund, so I'll check with staff.
Yes, we do. You know, the three hundred thousand dollar number is, is our best guess as to the maximum it would cost to demolish the buildings and do the environmental remediation. If we go out to bid and find that the number is something different, we might have to come back to you.
Okay. All right. With that, I will approve a resolution authorizing an interfund, or move to approve a resolution authorizing an interfund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with the proposed Tax Increment Financing District twenty-fourteen dash one, and at this point, not to exceed three hundred thousand.
I'll second. Other discussion? I'm actually really glad staff's doing this. Thank you for bringing this to us. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The item under consideration is a resolution approving the contract with the police supervisors, LES, that's Law Enforcement Labor Services, if you don't know, Local one sixty-two, for the contract period from January one, two thousand fourteen, through December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. City staff has completed labor negotiations with the police supervisors, LES, Local one sixty-two. The provisions of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen labor agreement cover all the employees in which the union consists of eleven positions, nine sergeants and two lieutenants. The two-year contract provides a wage adjustment of two-point-two-five percent for each year of the contract. It also includes an equity adjustment for both lieutenants and sergeants in order to bring their wages more in line with the, with other similarly sized metro areas. This was done after a thorough analysis of metro wages by staff. A forty-dollar per month increase in the city's contribution toward health insurance was also agreed to, as well as an increase of seven dollars and fifty cents per month towards employee single dental coverage. Both the two-point-two-five percent wage adjustment for the two thousand fourteen and the health dental insurance contributions are the same provided for the non-union staff. There is a re-opener provision for health insurance in two thousand fifteen. And I don't know if Pam has anything to add, since you were the negotiator, but I'm glad you got this one settled fast. Usually, we're talking about this in February, March, so...
Well, thank you very much. I know, we're very pleased to, this is the first contract settled for two thousand fourteen, but as you indicated, it's a two-year contract, and we like to try to get two-year contracts when we can. So, and again, as the report indicates, we noticed that as far as wages, we were a little bit below average, and so, it was important for us to, again, try to maintain average for similar-sized metro area cities. That's, that's an important goal that we try to keep.
Okay. Well, then, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we adopt the resolution approving the provision of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen labor agreement with the police supervisors, LES, Local one sixty-two bargaining unit, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. I'm sure our police force will enjoy a nice little raise, and they work hard for us, so I think they deserve it. All right, I'm going to try using just this, let's see how this works. Consideration of designating representatives to serve in the two thousand fourteen liaisons to various metropolitan agencies and city commissions. The members of the city council serve in the city, represent various different metro agencies, and, and we sit on commissions as liaisons. Each year, the city council appoints these representatives. I've heard from a couple of council members, and our list is up here, if there's some changes or something, or if anybody would like to switch or flip or anything like that, would people please speak up? I know that Councilmember Garcia wants to stay on what she had. I believe I heard from Councilmember Sandal, or did you have a change?
Well, I did. I wanted to stand Community Services. I've really gotten to where I know the group, and I also wanted to move into the Foul Board.
That would be great. That would be fine. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Good. And then, if, yeah, I don't know if, in much about this Richfield Community Human Services Planning Council, but, you know...
Mm-hmm. I would just go and switch with you, Edwin, if you want to do the Foul Board, when you can't go, let me know.
Okay.
I will flip-flop that.
Okay.
Who's on the Community Service, which one are you looking?
I think you are.
Yeah. On the, on the Health Board? Advisory Board of Health or...
No, 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 the, this...
The Community Services Commission. That's...
No, 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 the Premier, the Human Services Planning Council.
Okay.
I don't even know what...
I've never even been asked to go to a meeting there.
Oh, geez.
No.
Okay.
So...
Well, maybe they'll ask me, I don't know.
What is that in regards to city manager? Isn't that a group that gets together maybe once or twice a year or something now and then, discussing the groups?
Yeah, that's, that's what I think, I, yeah.
I believe, I believe there's a couple of staff that, right, and I haven't, I haven't been invited.
Yeah, I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to plead it pretty, pretty much ignorance on that. I, I've not attended those, and I'm really not that familiar with them, with that group.
The only thing is, is I've heard about, there's some staff that talk about the human and health services and stuff and what's going on or what's not, and...
Well, you know, let me, let me get, let me get back to you.
Okay.
Since I'm not giving you a real good answer right now.
Well, and, and the reason I thought that if, if that did exist is that, you know, that's my background, or...
Certainly is.
Human services, so...
Councilmember Elliott?
I'm, I'm, I enjoy where I'm at. I, if anybody that has, you know, I hadn't given any thought to moving.
Okay. Are you doing planning?
Well, the only thing is, is you and I, you and I are really kind of doing the Friendship Commission. Do you, Sue, do you mind if, working on that? You want to put your behind?
Sure.
Yeah, but it's be my, my second, because you and I have been working on that.
Right.
Off and on, trying to do something.
Planning's just difficult for me to get to.
Um, well, I know that, that you had interest in human rights. We can switch, you can go to human rights. And I, and I can switch over to planning?
I, I would prefer not.
I can do them both.
Okay, good.
I'll be your second on planning, Pat?
Okay.
Since Edwin can't do it.
Yeah, yeah, because I enjoy the planning commissions and I don't have...
Are you getting all this, Nancy, as we keep switching?
Good thing that we record this, right? I have it in writing. I've written mine down. Thank you.
Okay. And you know which ones you want to, you want to keep all yours?
I would just soon keep the ones I have.
That's what you told me, yeah. Tom, did, was there something?
No, I, I like where I'm at and on them, and then the Noise Oversight Committee.
Oh, takes a lot of time.
That eats up a lot of my time, so I'll stay on that.
And your time is well-spent there. Okay.
Yeah, I think it's well-spent on behalf of the citizens, because you really, really are informed and you keep us informed of what's going on, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, we really need somebody watching out for us. Thank you. It's a big job. And Pam really helps out a lot. Thank you, Pam. With those changes, then, I would move the designations of representatives to serve on the two thousand fourteen liaisons for various metropolitan agencies and city commissions.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So, moved.
And Nancy, there's a test tomorrow morning, so...
She'll watch the program. I'm, I'm sure she's going to watch that. Okay, item, item thirteen is discussion about going to the city council's attendance at the two thousand fourteen National League of Cities. And that, those dates are early March. I actually have them, I don't know if there's other interest for that, that is the DC Conference, March eighth through twelfth. I did go to the Seattle Conference in November. It's very, very nice, very worthwhile, and saw a lot there. We have a time to interact with our legislature at the federal level. So, this is a discussion on the National League of Cities conferences. I, I serve on the board, so I really need to go, and I really want to go. But I would, it would be nice if another council member, I know you've tried and tried, and it's not worked, but...
Well, would we be missing a council meeting?
Yes.
Well, okay, well, I'd like to go, but I know that I will be gone the second council meeting in March, so that would be missing two council meetings, so, you know...
We can excuse you.
We don't have to excuse you anymore.
I may not, careful, Councilmember Sandal, the last item is something...
We can't find you anyways.
Yeah, we've changed our rules, but...
The two council meetings in March are the eleventh...
Yeah, that's right over there.
And then, the twenty-fifth.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so, is everybody in accordance with allowing two folks to go to the...
Yeah, we just have to make sure we keep a quorum here.
We just have to make sure the city manager watches the agenda for us to, we're not going to have a supermajority, so...
Okay. So, at this point, I'll designate Councilmember Edwina and myself to attend the March eighth through twelfth, two thousand fourteenth National League of Cities Congressional City Conference in Washington, DC. And I don't know about the November eighteenth, twenty, twenty, to the twenty-second, the NLC Congress of Cities Exposition in Austin, I would be there most likely. Maybe we can leave that up and bring it up, back up to a discussion?
I think that's pretty, pretty far in advance.
Pretty far in advance for a lot of folks? Okay.
And, Your Honor, we've talked about having a report on, you know, what you learned at the Seattle one, if you would like to share with us?
I can, I can go grab all that information. There was quite a bit going on. I did a lot on finances, believe it or not. So, that was very enlightening about different ways to review finances. I think that was one of the most impactful ones, and then some on violence in cities, so... All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Discussion continues. We have two people going in DC. We'll revisit the next one. The next one is consideration of designation of Mayor Pro Tem for the following year. In the event that I am unable to be here, like when I go to conferences, the city council needs to designate a Mayor Pro Tem. The city charter states it's necessary to do this and to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for those times when the mayor's absent. At this time, I would move Member-at-Large Sue Sandal, again, to serve as Mayor Pro Tem for two thousand fourteen.
Well, let me think about that for...
Well, if you both go, then we better name a third one.
I'm just thinking of that, yeah.
No, I'll, I'll go ahead and second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I am deeply honored. Thank you both.
And I appreciate having you as my backup. That's great, so thank you. Motion carries. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I just, I do want to report on a couple of things. For one, I just want to remind everyone that some of the things coming up for city council, Saturday, January eighteenth, we've got commission interviews, and that starts at eight-thirty AM and ends at approximately ten AM. On Wednesday, January twenty-ninth, we have our meeting with our legislators, and that's going to begin at seven-thirty in the morning, and that's going to be in the Bartholomew Room. There'll be a light breakfast.
Would you repeat that date again, please?
Sure. That's Wednesday, January twenty-ninth at seven-thirty AM.
Early.
Yep, and Friday, January thirty-first, we're going to have our goal setting. That starts at eight AM, again, in the Bartholomew Room, and there will be a light breakfast and a lunch, because that's going to go till probably one PM or so.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not focusing. Wednesday, January twenty-ninth is which meeting?
Legislative Breakfast.
That's our Legislative Breakfast.
Wednesday, January twenty-ninth is Legislative Breakfast.
Legislative Breakfast, okay.
Yeah.
And that's seven-thirty at the Bartholomew Room?
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
And then, the thirty-first is our city goal-setting beginning at eight?
Yep.
Okay.
Same, same venue.
Thank you.
I, at this point, I just wanted to say that, and I'd actually mentioned this to Steve when I talked to him earlier, I had a, I've got a business trip to Dallas that week, and so, basically, in, in discussions with Steve and the, and the goals-planning, I'm going to miss the, the meeting with the legislatures and the city council meeting, but I had it scheduled, because I wanted to be back for the goal-setting, so I just wanted everybody to know that.
Okay. I'll give you a brief.
And that's going to run roughly until?
One.
One.
One o'clock.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
And then, one other thing, you know, today, today was a snow event, and it was the first big snow event of the year. Kind of interesting, I did have somebody email me this morning and say that they were concerned about the chronic violators, the snowbird violators who keep their cars parked in the street, and how come Richfield doesn't do anything? And someone said, this person overheard someone say, "My gosh, I don't think Richfield's issued a ticket for that in twenty years." I, Councilmember Fitz Henry, you probably have written several in the past twenty years.
I remember writing about fifty in one day.
Yeah, I'll bet you did. And I, you know, I, I got back to the gentleman, told him that we do very aggressively enforce the snowbird issue, and today, we did. Police started out at about eight, eight o'clock, eight-thirty this morning, and I know that there were many citations issued, there were many cars towed. There were many cars towed. But the point I want to make is that, you know, we try, we do everything we possibly can to make people aware that when you're going to have more than, you know, like about a two-inch or so of snow event, you need to get your cars off the street. And for those, there was one instance today where, and it was on the west side of town, north of 66th, between, it was between Penn Avenue and 35, where in a neighborhood street, there were two cars parked on the street in violation, one on each side of the street, that was so narrow that our plow driver didn't dare go through. And so, you know, when those kind of things happen, and you find the snowbirds, now what's going to happen tomorrow is we've got to send the crews back out again to replow the streets. So, we're wasting city money by having to fuel those trucks to go out a second time. We have got, you know, the people who are driving the trucks, yes, they would have to be here anyway, but by gosh, they could be doing something else. And it is absolutely mind-boggling to me that after all the time and effort we put out to get people to be aware, to get their cars off the street, that I, we now have to go and put that snowplowing crew out a second time, clean up the same streets they plowed today. That's a huge waste of city resources. And I feel bad for the people who are going to get their cars towed. I feel bad in a sense that it's costly. The snowbird violation alone's about 35 bucks. When you get through paying for the tow, and there's an automatic one-day storage fee that goes with it, I think the tow and the storage fee are about 125, I'm going to guess. So, you put that together with the snowbird violation, and it's not, it's not inexpensive. And you need to get down there the day your car gets towed, because if you go to the next day, you're going to get another, another day tacked onto it. But at the same time, it's costing, it's costing the city, and it's costing all of our residents, those who, those who really adhere to the ordinance, extra money to go back and redo streets that somebody has just neglected and moved their car off of.
Yeah, and it is a mess. It's a mess on my street because people hadn't moved-
Yeah, it's a, it's a mess. And, you know, I understand people get, people, people are probably more upset at the city that their street doesn't get cleaned because there's cars parked in the street. Believe me, folks listening, we do everything we can to try and get people to get those cars off the street, and it's, it's a hardship for us and a waste of time and money to have to go out there a second time. So, we do everything we can, but you're still, I guess there's just no way around it. It seems every year it's the same thing.
Yeah, it's a learning process.
You know, I'm-
It's a learning process that doesn't take effect from year to year, unfortunately.
I'm in Minneapolis now. My daughter lives there. And when I sit and look outside the window and the snowplows are going by, they have, I mean, our equipment is good equipment, and our folks do a really good job. You cannot compare Richfield to Minneapolis. We are so far, you know, ahead of them in every way. So, you know, I really appreciate the job that our folks do.
If I can comment, for every email I get saying, you know, "Why haven't you plowed my street?" I get another one saying, "Why did you tag my car?" You can't win. There's no matter what you do, you can't win.
Can I add something to that?
Sure, please.
Might want to tell them to watch their garbage cans, because I know today, the East Side had garbage pickup, and the plows had to go around some of the garbage cans, and those that got close to the garbage cans launched them back into the yards. But if the people realize that, okay, you know, we got, we're going to plow today, dump what you can in the middle of the roadway, so.
Councilmember Fitz Henry, thanks for bringing that up. I should, I should have mentioned that, because that, yes, absolutely. When I talked to Public Works, they talked about the snowbirds, but they said, "Oh, my gosh, can't believe how difficult it was with people who had their garbage cans too far out into the street and were trying to plow," and the mess that that caused. So, yeah, you know, getting clean streets is not an easy thing. Everybody has, everybody has to help. Homeowners have to help. Homeowners have to think, you know, "What can I do to make this a better process for all of us?"
I think all you need for some of the people that don't see the necessity of moving them, and I mean, there's a lack of consideration for your neighbors and everybody else, but I'll have Edwina take them on a day trip down to Minneapolis and try to drive through those streets. And try to figure out, try to figure out how a fire truck or ambulance or anything gets down those streets because they can't. And if you want to understand why the city is trying to keep you off the streets when we're plowing, just try to traverse any, and I'm talking South Minneapolis, where, you know, some of the, a good part of town or whatever you want to call it, it's a mess. You cannot get through those streets, and it's, it's like one-way streets everywhere, just because you can't get down them two cars side by side. It's as simple as that. So, take a trip, see what a really bad community in terms of plowing looks like, and then appreciate what you've got here, and let's keep it the same.
Well, St. Paul's made some big changes.
Well, yeah, they have a whole new staff.
Yeah, I know. I think, I think the mayor heard that, right?
Yeah.
Councilmember?
Yeah, I had one other comment, and that was that when people are out there and, you know, this was kind of an unusual snowplow. Like, last night, I never watched the news. I didn't know it was going to snow. So, when I got up in the morning and looked out, I went, "Oh, shoot," because I literally had just gotten my sidewalk cleaned off, you know?
Yeah, we know.
Down to the sidewalk. I know.
Sue, as often the case, had you watched, you still wouldn't have known, depending on which channel you watched.
Well, that could have been.
There was one saying the model changed, so it's going to miss us.
Yeah. So, but I mean, I could understand why this morning at 8 o'clock, people didn't realize that it had snowed, if they got up late or didn't look outside. So, but I guess it's all a learning kind of thing, so.
And I just, you know, with those liaison appointments, because we switched it all around, will you send us out a clean copy with all the changes? So, everybody's got it down, and then if something's wrong, we can go back? Just send us a clean copy, and we'll go back over?
And then, I had one more announcement for the city council. The 494 Corridor Commission is hosting a legislative meeting on January 24th at the Minnetonka City Hall and Community Center. And invited is, and attending will be Commissioners Zelli, plus all of the legislatures, legislators who are on the 494 corridor. And so, the mayor's invited, and I'm, and if there's another councilperson who is interested in attending, I've got an extra flyer, if you wish to attend. So.
Got one for me.
Got one for you.
Yeah, anybody know, I'll just PD if it's on.
If anybody else wants one, yeah.
Take the date down?
So, okay.
Okay, got two.
If someone else wants to attend, let me know, and I'll call in and let them know you're coming.
Good.
So.
I think I can make that. I'll let you know, though, if I can.
So. Okay.
Councilmember Fitz Henry?
Oh, yeah, we're good.
Claims and payroll.
Oh, claims and payroll, yeah, she gave me that, but.
I know.
She gave me the assignment because of that.
I have to make it even. I give everybody two.
Usually, you give it to the city manager.
I know. Claims and payroll. Me, I always take it.
I want to know who got 17, where you find that one.
I got that one. Claims and payroll, moved? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Because seeing no further items, I call this meeting adjourned.